Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 24th, 2017. To begin the meeting, I first want to say that the chairman, once again, is unable to make it as a result of family medical concerns. We hope he and his family the best. And with that said, we'll go to the signing of the warrant. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Motion to approve the warrant?
I'll second. That's unanimous. Next approval of, I want to get this right because I want to hold all executive session meeting minutes. So why don't I do this? Why don't we make, look for a motion to approve the July 10th regular session meeting minutes?
I would second that motion.
Okay, and that's unanimous to approve those. We'll save exec for exec. Next is invitation to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak who isn't on the agenda already? All right, let's see. See, somebody right in front of me, Harold. We'll start with you. You're no stranger to our meetings and our process, so just a reminder for everybody who, for benefit of process, for anybody who would like to speak at invitation to speak, it's not an opportunity to disparage Town Hall employees, but it's an opportunity to speak directly to the chair and to issues that would come before the Board of Selectmen. And as always, the board chairman recognizes or has the right to call upon anyone or not call upon anyone. But that said, Harold, please.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Harold Rhodes. I live at 11 Janock Road in Precinct 2. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak tonight. This Board of Selectmen have always placed a high priority on improving the quality of life for the citizens of Milford. Many decisions that have been made by this board have been guided by what you have determined to be necessary in order to promote the best interests of our health, wealth, welfare, and safety of our community. For example, we have the Health Department, which inspects restaurants for food safety before people become ill. We have the department, we have the Police Department that inspects package stores for sales of alcohol to minors before an automobile accident occurs. We have, we have this Board of Selectmen that approves one-day events to assure security against fire and police, and protection for the attendees before visitors are hurt. And we have our town administrator now implementing the Title II Transition Plan for municipal public buildings before persons with disabilities are harmed in any manner while visiting a municipal building. So clearly, this board has promoted, you know, its full necessary and quintessential responsibility to bring the highest quality of life for Milford through the necessary protections to maximize our health, welfare, and safety. And when given the opportunity to further promote Milford's quality of life, this Board of Selectmen has always and consistently been supportive. So now let me turn to the pointed hand. Last April, I posed a question to the Building Commissioner as follows. Similar to the Health Department, the Police Department, and other departments, may the Building Commissioner inspect public buildings for building code compliance without notice? So, may the Building Commissioner inspect public buildings for building code compliance without notice? As you are aware, the Massachusetts Building Code assures the health, welfare, and safety of visitors to public buildings. Inspection for compliance with the building code by the Milford Building Commissioner would certainly be consistent with this Board of Selectmen's quintessential goal of providing the highest quality of life here in Milford. In response to this question, both the Building Commissioner and Town Council provided written responses on April 20th. The Building Commissioner wrote, "One, I do not have the right to inspect a public building without probable cause. Two, I have thoroughly reviewed the above referenced standards, consulted with the AAB Director Dave Sullivan, who also consulted with AAB Director Tom Hopkins, as to whether I have the right to perform an inspection of public buildings. The mutual consensus and understanding that I do not have the right to inspect a public building without probable cause." Town Council wrote a lengthy letter. But just some highlights, further Mr. Rhodes' question, however, seems to have behind it an assumption that if an authority to an inspector enforces present, then the Building Commissioner may undertake such an inspection without particular cause or judicial authority. As addressed by Mr. Erickson, such an assumption within the question would not be a reasonable one. In sum, number two, he said, "In some area sweeps or town-wide sweeps of facilities to determine whether or not there is compliance would not be valid under federal or state law." After receiving these responses from the Building Commissioner and Town Council, on May 1st, I requested the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Architectural Association's Board, Tom Hopkins, to review these responses. Mr. Hopkins then forwarded my question, as well as the responses, to Deirdre Ann Hoser, Deputy General Counsel, Division of Professional Licensor, Massachusetts Office of Public Safety and Inspections. Last week, the Deputy General Counsel responded, not just for the town of Milford, but also on behalf of the whole Commonwealth. So the answer given does not just apply to Milford, this is now a clarification that has been made for the whole Commonwealth. In the letter, highlights of the letter, well, in sum, the Deputy General Counsel completely disagreed with the responses provided by the Building Commissioner and Town Council. Highlights of the letter include, specifically, both letters concern whether a building official has the authority, absent probable cause, to enter and inspect a private building or structure that allows public access. Contrary to the conclusions drawn in these letters, probable cause is not a legal condition precedent for inspections. Inspectors have far-reaching authority to enter public buildings for the purpose of enforcing the statewide building code. The Board's enabling statute is unequivocal in this point and states, "The Board shall have the power of local and state inspectors in the enforcement of its rules, regulations, but not limited, the right to enter all buildings." Building officials are similarly authorized to enter and inspect buildings absent probable cause or criminal complaint. The statutory right to enter buildings for the purpose of enforcing building codes is clearly not conditioned on first having probable cause. In fact, it is the duty of a building official under 780 CMR, that's the building code, to periodically enter and inspect buildings. In fact, it is the duty of a building official under the building code to periodically enter and inspect such buildings. For reason, for, skipping over, "For reasons of the above, the Office of Public Safety and Inspections and the Board respectfully request henceforth enforcement of the, in the town of Milford must not hinge on the inept probable cause requirement." The Deputy General Counsel has made clear that all building inspectors within the Commonwealth have the obligation to inspect public buildings to ensure the health, welfare, and safety of visitors to public buildings. Repeating what the Deputy Counsel said, in fact, it is the duty of the building official to periodically enter and inspect such buildings. Since most, if not all, public buildings in Milford have not been recently inspected, let me make two recommendations to this Board of Selectmen. First, consistent with the findings of the Deputy General Counsel, let me please recommend that this Board of Selectmen direct the town administrator to bring forth a plan that presents a schedule of inspections of public buildings in Milford to be completed in a timely manner. Second, let me recommend, based on the belief that the Building Commissioner might indicate that to the town administrator, that other priorities would prevent timely inspections of public buildings, that this Board of Selectmen direct the town administrator that the inspection of public buildings be given high priority. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, you know, that's certainly something that's interesting. I haven't read that document, so I've not seen what the Deputy General Counsel has said relative to Jerry Moody's letter. But it seems, you know, I have no reason to believe that you didn't receive that letter and that, do you know if Jerry received a copy of that?
I spoke to Rick, I actually, Rick had not received it in the mail as yet. I did not know, but I emailed him a copy of the letter and the other letters this afternoon.
This afternoon, okay. So we'll have counsel look over that, and I think from what you've read, it is clear that, that both the building inspector and our town council were operating under a false premise that they needed probable cause in order to perform inspections. So with that, you know, I, you know, I would agree with you from the standpoint that, you know, what the police, what the fire, what the other departments do as a matter of prevention, that we should probably have a schedule, and if it's not predicated on a need for probable cause, then we should probably have a schedule to know that we're getting into public buildings and, and look to have building inspection. Have you had?
I've looked at the letter. I think there's a little more to it. I really want to go into it tonight, but, again, I'll leave it at that.
All right, so why don't, why don't, why don't we do it this way? Why don't you get a copy of that letter to the board via email?
Yeah.
And we can look it over.
Sure.
Make our own interpretation and then work with you and Town Council to see how we'd go forward on the language. All right?
Thank you. Mike, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I look forward to the continuation of this and bringing forth to a plan that, you know, again promotes the health and wealth and safety of folks who live here in Milford.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harold. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Brian Cole. I live in Precinct 8. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed ban on recreational marijuana sales. I believe that, like alcohol, we can better control its distribution and quality and better limit usage by minors if we work with dedicated businesses who are strongly incentivized to comply with restrictions and provide their customers with quality products. Our neighbors in Franklin have already embraced retail marijuana, setting out zoning restrictions and adding a 2% local tax. But I understand and acknowledge the need to have this referendum. Since we're having it, we should make sure that we hear from as many Milford residents as possible. And to that end, I would like to know what the town is going to do to maximize voter turnout. Are we putting out signs to tell people when the election is? If so, when and where are they being put up? Could we use the alert system that we currently have for parking bans to tell people when the election is? Could we put together a mailer, like the one that went out for the statewide referendum questions last fall? These are just things I thought of off the top of my head. Thank you for your time. I look forward to your responses and pass along my best wishes to Will. Let him know we're thinking about him.
Okay. Thank you. So you have no issue with the fact that there's a referendum coming out? You're not in support of it?
It is what it is.
But you acknowledge the provision under that ballot initiative to provide for local control and allowed for communities to opt out?
Sure.
Okay. And it wasn't a precondition of that, that the town vote in favor of it or against in the first election, statewide election?
No, it wasn't then, although the, although obviously the compromise bill that's gone through the general court has changed that a little bit.
Yeah, and so we would have been in compliance, we would have been in compliance anyway.
Right, right.
Right, okay.
Given that we're having the election, like I said, I want to make sure that we come as close as possible to 75% of the town that came up, that came out the first time.
Yeah, let me, let me just clarify, and we can seek counsel opinion. I don't believe we're allowed to use town funds for the referendum and to, to do a mailer, but I don't see why signs and alerts, which have been done in the past, by the way.
Sure.
Are used to allow people to know that there is a referendum and that there's a...
The only reason I bring it up is because in the April...
We've done it for, we've done it for April elections. We put out our sign boards to say, "It's election today," or...
I always feel, right, but I feel like it's interesting because the candidates will put their signs up two months before, or whatever the...
Forty-five days.
Right.
It's what it allowed today.
All right. And the town puts up the signs two days before, four days before, whatever it is.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly of that process, but, so why don't we do this? There is, there are laws that prevent us from, as public officials, using tax dollars to promote one way or another.
No, I don't know. That wasn't what I was...
No, no, I know. I just want to be clear for those folks that might be watching at home, because I understand your point. But your point is specifically to see what the town can do within the existing laws to encourage and promote voter participation.
Absolutely.
There are ways in which that can be done, and we'd look to town clerk to see what we can do to increase voter participation. And, you know, I think it, it's important in this regard. We're not used to having September elections.
Right.
Or September ballot initiatives, or September votes. So this is out of the ordinary, and I think, I think it's a perfectly legitimate question at any election or any vote, that we always look to see how we can do increased voter participation. I know that's a initiative by the Secretary of State, and it's always been within the purview of town clerk, and we always want to see those numbers increase.
Sure. I was disappointed to see that they couldn't do early voting for some reason, although I didn't see exactly why that was.
Yeah, I don't know about the early voting. I know that ballots did go out for absentee.
Okay.
But why don't we see what's, what we can do within the law and have Amy check with the Secretary of State's office and see what we can do for the, you know, just for the purpose of increasing voter participation. Nothing wrong with that. There, I don't think there are laws that govern that, or if there are, there are guidelines that we can follow and still, I think, meet the, the spirit of just voter participation, not one way or another.
That's all I ask.
Yeah?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, you're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Okay. With nobody else here who's raised their hand, Jerry, you, I mean, I'm sorry, you and I have already had the discussion. That won't be happening tonight. You and I, you've already abused that privilege in the past and with warnings that were going on at the time. I'm sorry, Bill, did you want to speak? Please.
My name is Bill Sanborn, 10 Virginia Drive, Milford. I just wanted to speak against the previous speaker. I feel strongly that it's too soon to allow recreational sale of marijuana in this community. And I don't think it's really prudent for us to be pioneers, given the lack of guidance and understanding on what this, you know, this retail sales of marijuana might do, how this might impact our community. So I feel strongly that we should be opposing the, you know, recreational sale of marijuana until such time that we know more about how this is affecting other communities. There are a lot of communities around us and across Massachusetts that are opting out specifically because they don't know how this is going to impact their community. And so I feel strongly that we should not be allowing the sale of recreational marijuana at this time.
And I'm going to guess, I want to just make sure there's a separation between your personal position on retail sales of marijuana and the desire by the individual and this board to increase voter participation.
No, I, if we can increase voter participation, I support that wholeheartedly. Absolutely.
I think we're all in agreement there.
Yes.
All right. And, you know, with each of the board members and any elected officials, they're all independently elected, have the opportunity to take positions on any local initiatives and have that right to do that. I want to make sure that's clear to everybody, too. So as Board of Health members, others that are public officials have the opportunity to see, as an example, Westboro, the movie, the Chief of Police helped lead that initiative. But there were, you know, there will be and are comments by elected officials that are independently elected that take a position one way or another, and they're entitled to do that. They didn't give up their First Amendment rights either in that process. Well, we can't use our funds from the town to promote one way or the other taxpayer funds, so just want to be clear. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go to public hearings and scheduled appointments. First item on the agenda is National Grid Verizon, a joint poll location for Cedar Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to do Poll 87 first? Cedar Street?
Yes.
Okay. So go ahead and just describe what you're hoping to do.
Michael Fraser, National Grid. Proposal for National Grid relocate Poll 87, 54 feet, in the southerly direction to make way for a new entrance to the new business park on Cedar Street.
And the only new poll is Poll 87?
Correct.
Okay.
Removing the old, it's existing, just relocating it.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I'll go to my colleague, Selectman Walsh. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. This is the new industrial park that we are, yeah.
Correct.
That's the only question I have.
Yeah, as it turns out, the poll would be directly in the entrance way.
Correct.
Okay.
So you're moving it to the side.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll accept a motion to approve the National Grid request Plan Number 2409-1550, moving that poll on Cedar Street, number, number 87, and relocating Poll 87.
I wouldn't make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I'll second. That's unanimous. Next you have Poll, Franklin Street Poll. I think this one's near and dear to the chief's heart. Go ahead.
National Grid Repolls, install new Poll 2-5 to relieve stress off of existing Poll 2. Poll 2 looks to be a dead-end poll, and just stressing the wires, so just alleviate some of the wire weight on it and tension to put a midspan poll in there.
So this is a preventative action.
Correct.
By National Grid to make sure that our police station in downtown area stays lit and with communications and all the things we need to run effective public safety?
Correct.
I think that's a good enough reason to...
I say it's a good maintenance.
Thank you.
Yep. I wouldn't make a motion to accept that, Mr. Chairman.
I would as well. Thank you for bringing these. I appreciate the detail that you provided in the drawings. It's helpful to us so that we can come in prepared and, I think, have a good understanding of what you're trying to do. So nice work, and thank you very much. Is there anything else that you have for the board? Just those two? Okay.
Those two.
Very good.
Thank you.
All approved. Thank you. Next, we have an update from the Chief of Police regarding the Portuguese picnic.
Good evening.
So we made our way through the weekend. It went well. As you know, the number of officers that we have, just to recap on that, we have an officer during the day. During the evening, there are actually 19 police officials. There's 10 Milford police officers, two sergeants, myself, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Saturday, and from 6, excuse me, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Saturday, and 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM on Sunday. And then the state police, once again, are providing me with a sergeant and five troopers at no expense to the community or the club. We also have fire department EMTs present, and once again, an ambulance unit from, Community Ambulance, was dedicated to assist us. Saturday, we saw a lesser number of people than we normally see, probably over the course of the day, about 8,000 in and out of the property. That particular evening, we placed one 50-year-old male from Milford in protective custody. He needed a ride home. He needed a ride home when he arrived, so it wasn't, he was there. We took him home, and the other folks that lived within the same apartment unit wouldn't accept him, so he spent the evening with us, and he was okay the next day and went on home. We did make three arrests. We arrested a 19-year-old male from Framingham for assault and battery on a police officer, me, disorderly conduct, and disturbing the peace. I went to check his identification, and he decided he wanted to beat me up, so it didn't work out well. The other two were individuals that engaged each other out on the far end of the soccer field, and two of the state troopers identified that they were in a conflict and placed the two of them under arrest. They were less than pleasant, so they also spent the evening with us. We did have a couple of other young people that were in conflicts. We separated them, contained them, and we contacted their parents. One mother of a young man who was staying with relatives here in Milford came up from one socket to bring him back home. The other was a young 18-year-old kid here from Milford, and his parents both arrived up at the club to take their son home, and we didn't see him for the rest of the weekend. We had one female that went to the hospital with a bloody nose. She refused to tell us how she ended up with a bloody nose, and at this point, we still don't know. Sunday, the parade went very well. No issues at all, kind of warm. Bill was there, and Will, once the sun come out of the clouds, it got hot. Number of people out watching the parade, and then, once again, at the club, you get the traditional dance, and that takes place all afternoon into the early evening. It was very quiet Sunday into the later evening. The crowd was much less than in years past, about 3,500 people, I estimate, all day long, based on my observations. We had no issues whatsoever. We did, a couple days later, get one complaint of a young man who said that 35-year-old man engaged, excuse me, 36-year-old man engaged in a conflict with him and assaulted him, and we sought charges in the district court for that. But overall, no major issues. Things went very well. And as far as the neighborhoods, I did go out periodically into the neighborhoods. I actually, Saturday night, Saturday, at the Sully Funeral Home, and I, out of the car, I could not hear the music. I went over to West Street, near Maria Circle. I was up the other end, near Shaw's, you know, the drive where you pull in, and I wasn't picking up anything at that distance, so I didn't go any further than that. I did go down Exchange Street likewise. Sunday, maybe it's just the fact you didn't have the number of people there, I could hear the music a little further out onto Water Street, in the lower end of Water Street, and went back and talked to them, and we brought it down an notch or two. So very cooperative, very helpful. Saturday night, we did run into the officers checking people. We ran into a number of counterfeit identification cards, licenses from out of state, and as a result, we put a police officer right at the table where the identification's checked. And that officer was there for the remainder of the evening and then all day Sunday, in making sure that IDs were checked and that they were appropriate. So we didn't have any issues as far as those IDs on Sunday. We are looking at, we do have in our cruises, we actually have a reader. You can put any type of identification in, and it will tell you whether or not it's legitimate or not. So we have that in all the police cars. We have it at the booking desk. We do have one portable unit. So we're going to take a look at the possibility of deploying that next year. So with a police officer there, if they have a question, they hand the ID to the officer. We just feed it into the computer, and it'll come back and tell you whether or not this, it searches and tells you that's a legitimate ID or not. So overall, things went very well. I do have a meeting scheduled with the president of the club next week, as we do every year, recap things, take a look, and what can we do better? Some of the things I just mentioned to you, and whatever other issues they may have on their side of the fence that we can help take care of.
Okay. Any questions, Mike?
I have a couple. One of the things that I hear on the community chief is, particularly from the residents of Milford, is that Saturday is the day you stay away, because that seems to be when the incidences, as you just reported... Because that seems to be when, when the incidences, as you just reported, you had nothing on Sunday, but you had four or five on Saturday. Do you equate that to the, the number, the eight thousand versus the thirty-five hundred? Do you?
I, I think it's the numbers. I think it's the age. You know, Saturday, you're dealing with, we, we no longer allow, for instance, backpacks. Can't bring a backpack. So we see someone with a backpack, we check it, and if they're carrying clothes, that's fine, see you later. You're not bringing a backpack in here. For, not only the issues of carrying contraband in, but the concerns that we have from a security standpoint and a safety standpoint of, I don't know what's in that backpack, and it could be bad news. So, in, in working with the state police and with our own offices, we're very, very, we, we're keen to that. We target it. So if we see that, to, I'd be naive to suggest to you that I don't deal with a number of young people that end up coming to the picnic. And, you know, the, whether it be alcohol or drugs before they got there. And I'm talking people that are under twenty-one. So, I mean, it, it, something that I deal with, I deal with parents every year, that, you know, there's a responsibility on their part as well. You know, your, your son or daughter's going out the door, they're going somewhere.
Right.
You know, so when we encounter those young people, because as you know, as they come in, there's a pretty good cadre of police officers there. If we see someone that looks a little out of place, then wait a second, kid. There's a number of young people that we pull aside and they sit at the wagon till their parents come for them. They're not going into the picnic. So, you deal with those issues, you deal with the he said, she said. And that's why, and over the years, in deploying the police officers, one, my, when I came here, it was, Milford Police Officers wouldn't work the detail. I, we built into the contract, I can order them to. They're all Milford officers. So there's no anonymity. We know you. We know your family. I deploy those officers throughout the property. So, as you look, you'll see them up near the front door, meaning going into the lounge area, you'll see them down back. So they're, they're throughout the crowd, and they're moving throughout the crowd as well. There's four officers that actually just, that's all they do, is walk back and forth, moving through the crowd, checking ID, checking bracelets. Who are you, you know, et cetera. So, but on balance, if you, if you have several thousand people there and you have our number, I'll give you the even number, twenty officers. You know, it, it's a matter of watching things and, and making sure. So, yeah, no doubt about it.
And do you feel that the concerns that you have, in most cases, are out of town? Are there people not from Milford?
We run into quite a few. It, it's pretty much a mix. The people that are from the community, one of us is gonna know them or their family. That, that's the easy one to deal with. I, I don't care where they're from. You know, that young man, he had an option. You know, either his mama was coming to get him, or he's going to Blue Light Hotel. I mean, it was that bottom line. There's no question marks. So, I, I put it right on. Look, you wanna spend the night with me, you're more than welcome. That's where you're gonna spend the night. You wanna go home to your bed, that's where you're going. But you're not going to stay at your best friend's house or your cousin's house. It, no, mom or dad, you know, and it's not big brother, big sister, mom or dad. And it's, it's working with those families, just that sense of responsibility. And you'd be, well, you wouldn't be surprised at the impact. I, I, I haven't had a bad experience yet with parents that show up. You know, once they know that, wait, your son has to go home, and two, you're getting the break, so.
And I'm pleased to hear that you jumped right on, because that's one of the other things I heard about, was the false identification bracelets. I'm glad you, you know, you and your department jumped right on that and, and had it under control, because that's another concern that I heard from the community.
And we changed them, you know, because, you know, the kids aren't stupid. Bless you. They're gonna save them, you know. It's, you know, but you see one that if they've been torn, you can tell. You know, and, and the officers are really alert to that. The false IDs, you know, when you start coming up with Wisconsin, I, driver's licenses. How many kids in Milford?
It's a heck of a picnic.
Went to Wisconsin, you. Not happening, right? So, it was a matter of, because one of the acceptable IDs is a driver's license, you know, under the statute. So it was a matter of working with the folks from the club to say, wait a second, timeout. You know, I can deal with a Rhode Island driver's license, and it's not gonna catch my attention because we're so close in proximity? Wisconsin, yeah, it's worth the second look.
So, thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Yeah, Chief, you mentioned some of the intervention where you work with young people, call their folks and stuff. Any sense of what those numbers look like? You mentioned PC, you mentioned some of those, but.
The, the PC, the PC was, I mean, I mean, he's a fifty-year-old guy, so.
No, no, I'm just thinking, you mentioned PC and the ones that resulted in charges, but there were a number of young people.
I, I had two of them.
Okay.
That we, they were in a conflict. They were going to fight. The officers separated them, contained them. And then it was a matter of, and the one young man that is from Milford, his parents were here in a matter of minutes. And to say the least, they let him know how disappointed they were that he would be involved in something like that, so. You know, he's a kid headed to college, he, no history, good kid, scholarship.
Well, if he's listening, then it doesn't get his right.
He knows.
Yeah, sometimes the alcohol that got him to, you know, get your attention is also the one that got the other one to make bad judgments and.
That one wasn't even drinking.
All right, wow.
So, it was, it was, it's just a matter of making sure he went home.
What's the requirement by statute for alcohol, to procure alcohol? What's the requirement for valid ID?
The, the statute speaks about driver's licenses, the alcohol ID, a valid passport, military ID. So, the, the criteria is laid out in the statute. You can accept other ID. If you accept one of them that's in the statute, then you're not gonna be penalized by this board or the ABCC.
But is it a requirement to also accept Texas license, California license, Arizona?
No, it's, it's Massachusetts driver's license, you know, so it's, it's a matter of, you know, looking at the IDs and seeing if they're legitimate. It's a matter of looking at passports, seeing if the, you know, if I have a passport and the people are visiting from, say, Portugal. And it's a legitimate passport, which we can check electronically, and it will tell us that's a legitimate Portuguese passport from Portugal.
And the issue, I don't wanna ask an obvious question, but I will just for the benefit of others and maybe to educate myself further. I might be surprised at the response. The invalid licenses, those that are highly suspect, those are being carried by whom?
Young people that are just.
I thought you were gonna say.
Ranging up to twenty-one. It's, you know.
So underage, underage drinking?
Right, they're off at college and they're using those IDs wherever they go to school, they're using them. You know, and that's why several years ago, we invested and built into our computer system the ability, write in the cruiser, the officer can feed that ID and, as well as at the booking desk.
Chief, I'm gonna ask you a question because coincident with that Saturday night, there was also a murder in town. And I, I only want you to share, obviously, those things that you feel comfortable sharing, because I'm sure it's an ongoing investigation. But there was a speculation by a lot of people that this was a spillover from the, the Portuguese picnic. And I, if you can talk about it.
I, I can say in this, 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 the conflict between those two individuals had absolutely, totally, no question about it, nothing to do with the picnic.
Okay.
Those two individuals were together that evening at that home.
Okay.
That's where they had spent the night.
You know, people make assumptions, Chief, and.
There was a roommate that did come home from the picnic and.
Wasn't involved.
He wasn't involved. He went to bed. He had nothing to do with anything.
All right.
So, the two individuals in the conflict never left that residence that day.
All right. Yeah, and working with the, the club as you go through that meeting and lessons learned or whatever it is that you're, you're looking at and talking about. You know, I want them to, I, I can speak personally, look at the hours, look at the hours for Saturday and Sunday night. And when they think it would be appropriate to stop liquor sales as an individual, I'm thinking that maybe we ought to move it up. But I wanna, I, I don't wanna surprise anybody, so I want, I'm glad that you're here. It's appropriate that, that we can have those discussions and see what they might need to alter in order to still make it a viable event, a cultural event. You mentioned the dance after the parade. I don't know how they do it with those, those young people do it. With their traditional garb, if you will, you know it's heavy. It's black, as it turns out. It's wool and hot. So I was having enough time in shorts and a shirt. So, yeah, if you could convey that, that, that's at least one member of the board's thinking that maybe we will relook at those and revisit those hours in the next request. And we'll work together on it, but maybe there's an opportunity to make it less of a drinking event later at night and more of a cultural event, food and, you know, whatnot. So, yeah, please pa, feel free to pass that along.
Sure. And to that point, you know, as you know, we moved back the music and, and cut back that hour.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to give you feedback on that.
So, in, in moving the music time back, the interesting thing is, once the music stops.
People go home.
Right. This year, I mean, we would go right up to the one o'clock hour before people would be out the door. This year, frankly, we were standing around. It was just after twelve-thirty and we're looking at each other, so.
I wanted to reinforce something that you had said, because I know that you've been working hard to make sure that the, the music isn't an impact. And I gotta say, I'm not far up the street. For every year prior to this, I've heard the music at a fairly moderate level. I gotta tell you, I could faintly pick up the event, so.
I was on your street.
So, so I, yeah, I just reinforced.
At about quarter of eleven, I was on your street.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta tell you, this is.
I wasn't getting.
The least impactful from a quality of life standpoint for those who are not participating at eleven o'clock. I enjoy participating, just not always at eleven or twelve o'clock. And, and just to reinforce it further, I didn't get one complaint or any concern about the music volume for the first time for as long as I've been a member of the Board of Selectmen. So, that's pretty telling as well. So, I wanna thank you for coming in, give the update. Feel free to pass along those comments and thank you for making that another safe event. And I'm glad you were able to talk to the issue about that event and that there, there was no, it's not precipitated by attendance at the thing. It was even talked about whether those two had issues at the, at the picnic. And I didn't, I didn't hear that, and I'm glad to hear that wasn't the case.
Had nothing to do with that event, and they, they were well-known to one another.
Yeah.
It's an isolated incident, and honestly, people shouldn't be concerned for their well-being. You know, we were, albeit very tired, but nevertheless, as you know, that investigation came together with the help of District Attorney Joe Early and the state police detectives assigned to his office as well as our detectives. So, you know, we're at a point where, you know, that individual will be coming back here from New Jersey and then it's up to the process of the DA and the courts.
Okay. Yeah, you know, certainly there's some anxiety in the community. Anytime there's murder. And, you know, I think it's a good idea that elected officials acknowledge that anxiety and those concerns.
Sure.
They're legitimate. The other thing is, they're being honest about how people, how they feel.
Sure.
How they feel is neither right or wrong. It's how they feel. And so, you know, you know, maybe we can talk about that further. I don't wanna get into it tonight because I don't want, one, I don't wanna catch you by surprise. Number two, this was intended to be an update from the picnic. This wasn't intended to paint a rosy picture or a good picture or a bad picture. It's just an update, giving data and information.
It's reality, and that's what I deal with. So it's, you know, you bring together large numbers of people if it, I mean, you take a look at Gillette Stadium, you take a look at Fenway Park or other venues. If you bring together a number of people, you, that's why you have the police there.
Right.
So it's to make sure. When you throw the number out, Chief, just using as example, I'm sorry to ask this last question. When you say Saturday, the crowd was roughly eight thousand, in your years of being the police chief, what would the numbers have been in the past? I mean, would they?
Oh, we run any ten, twelve thousand people over the course of the day? At night, I, coming up to eleven o'clock at night in that one venue, I could have, there present, six thousand people. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have another issue in front of us, but I don't think there's any, it's, it's about a sign, so we're good.
I get to escape?
Yeah, you get to leave. Normally, we move things up on you just to.
I'm all good.
All right.
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
All right, next we have Town Administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items tonight. One, an item from the Milford Park Department. They just wanna publicly thank the Milford Lions Club for sponsoring the Entertainment at Plains Park for the fireworks show on July third, two thousand seventeen. The Lions Club paid for the service of a DJ as entertainment for the evening, which was enjoyed by all who attended. Second item, the tax collector wants to, just to remind residents, we've gotten a couple of calls, that the town is now using a lockbox to receive tax payments. So you get an envelope with your tax bill and the tax payments are sent to a PO box in Reading, Massachusetts. The use of this lockbox is to benefit the town by lessening our expenses for collection. Also, people reminded, you can still bring it into Town Hall, as many people like to do the tax payments. And/or if somehow you do mail it to fifty-two Main Street, it will get credited appropriately to their account. So, just, we did get one or two calls, people just were a little bit pet questions concerning it. So, I just wanted to bring that point to the attention of the board and the public. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
No, it's, no, great point you raised regarding the, the cooperation we have and the support we have from the Milford Lions to, to help with that DJ. People aren't sure that are watching at home, the taxpayers fund the fireworks. And I know I've been thanked in the past for helping to get the, the fireworks done. It's just important that they know, and I tell them, you helped pay for that and you make it the event. So, it's the birthday of the United States. It's a great day to, to see fireworks under a controlled environment by professionals. And I'm glad it was another successful year, and I heard a lot of positive comments about that.
Yes.
So thank you for bringing that up, please.
Yeah. Rick, you make reference to the Park Department. I had a couple of residents reach out to me about the, I think I brought it up to you once before about the flashing light that's across the street from Dunkin' Donuts for the bike path.
Yes.
I did about a month ago, I saw Brazier Mancini out there working on it.
Yes.
It's still not working, so I assume they must have taken it, you know, apart to figure out what they needed for parts. If you could just get an update on that.
Sure, I can definitely do that.
Just this morning I drove by. It's still not working.
Okay, I will check that.
The side on the Dunkin' Donuts side is working, the side across the street by Stokks Barber Shop is not flashing. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sure, I'll check into that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, many issues of safety, Mike, raise them quick, you know, and without apology because if it's something that pops up that you see, you know, even make the calls, because, you know, high priority. You know, Harold mentioned that a priority of this board is quality of life. We're taxing our boards and departments to go out there and work on issues of quality of life, whether they be task force, task force, Board of Health as it relates to some of the rodent concerns. Chief Police is, we continue to talk to him about concerns regarding safety, fire. But if there's anything that pops up for safety, over and above issues of just general quality of life is resident safety. So, high priority for the board. I'm glad it's a high priority for you as well. Because you can take away a lot of the good things that happen on the trails just with one accident.
Somebody, you have somebody getting hit across.
A young person crossing and, so, young or old, it's a challenge. So, thank you. Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Old business. We have Town Administrator update on the Blackstone Valley School Committee vacancy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the board regrettably accepted the resignation of Artie Morin, longtime member of that committee. The board has gone through a similar situation before because there are vacancies in this board. Uh, because there are vacancy in this board, uh, the remaining members give written notice to the selectmen. Uh, we did get a letter from Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick. He's the district clerk of the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District, asking us to, uh, initiate the process to fill the vacancy. Uh, I would ask the board tonight to announce that there'll be a joint meeting of the Milford School Committee members and the members of this board on Monday, August seventh, at our meeting, and that any interested person may apply to fill the vacancy. Uh, at that meeting, the vacancy can be filled by a roll, roll call vote of the members of the school committee president and the members of the Board of Selectmen. In addition, uh, the board and through my office will post, uh, notice of the vacancy. We must do that one week prior to August seventh. Whoever is appointed by, uh, this roll call vote, uh, the appointment will be for a term through December of two thousand eighteen. And then, obviously, as an elected position, they would be required to run, should they so choose, and anyone else could run for that position. So, just to initiate the process to fill this vacancy.
Yeah, so I'll accept a motion as it relates to, uh, Rick's memo, um, to make all the necessary arrangements and communication to the public and to the school committee, uh, to make, uh, that vote on August seventh, uh, possible.
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion.
Alright, I'll second it and that's unanimous. Uh, next, town administrator, under old business, is town administrator, update on retail proposed amendment and bylaw?
Yes, um, I was asked by the chairman to, uh, put this on, uh, again. I did provide in your packet the original ballot question prepared by town council, as well as a brief letter, uh, from him to the chairman. Uh, coincidentally today, or very recently, as you know, uh, both the House and the Senate, um, agreed on a revised, um, rewording of the proposed vote for a special election within one of the parameters of the law. Uh, it looks like now that we may have to reword this proposed vote, uh, for a special election to fit the parameters of the new law, should it be approved by the governor, and the expectation is that it will, uh, be approved. Um, I just recently just gave to you, um, a memo from town council and, uh, for your consideration, a revised question, uh, which includes the text of the proposed bylaw. Um, and again, it'd be a slight revision. Uh, this may mean that we have to reword this, uh, and, uh, prepare again the ballot question and, and resend, unfortunately, but it doesn't stop the process from going forward. Um, but there are requirements we should need, uh, we will need, excuse me, to meet, so.
So, as a result of, I just want to recap that, as a result of the most recent legislation by the state. And assuming that that new legislation, uh, would be signed into law. And I don't think there's anything that the governor signaled that he wouldn't sign it.
All indications he will.
Um, there is a requirement by this community who's already sent out, uh, absentee ballots to pull back on that word, modify it to meet state laws. And that puts the question of the existing ballot initiative and the language in it up for discussion and in play again.
Again, according to town council, yeah, we may have to reword the proposed vote for the special election. Yes.
And let's assume that, let's assume that the governor signs it into law. Is that a fact that we would have to, uh, reword it?
I don't want to say it's a fact. I don't know that I'd go that far. It's, it's, we may have to reword it. I think town council's waiting for the governor to do what he's going to do, and then I think town council will again, um, um, provide.
Let's just assume for the no language change. Can we get a ruling on Jerry, from Jerry, uh, on town council? With no language change, if the governor signed the existing compromise legislation.
Yeah.
From the Joint Committee on Marijuana. I had to say that. Um, the, um, what would be required by the.
Okay, sure, yeah.
I know he can't speculate on a lot of things, but he can say, if they, if he signs existing, the existing legislation and leaves it as is, which I don't think he can amend it. He can only veto it. He can line item veto.
Yes, that's correct.
In the budget. Okay. Um, then what that, what does that do for our existing language? That's an interesting, uh, thing because I know that there have been different people who have approached me um, regarding product manufacturers and cultivators, uh, for, without impinging on medical marijuana. Um, they, uh, were suggesting different language to make it all consistent for recreational use. So, uh, yeah, I'm happy to review that language and see where we go. Uh, we got good input today, talking about how to increase voter participation. I think that's a great thing, no matter where you fall.
Sure.
Uh, on the issue. Uh, so, okay.
Okay.
Seems like some of the right things are happening. Mike, do you have anything further under old business?
Just a question I have on what we just discussed.
Sure.
How would that, if we do have to make some language change, how would that affect our actual?
Yeah, well. Does it change the date?
I don't think it does.
I think we're way ahead of it.
We, I was just gonna say, we're, we're pretty early in the game, so I don't think it should change the September nineteenth date.
Then would be, what does it do for absentee ballots that were already sent up?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I don't know how we're gonna avoid confusion.
Yeah, can we get Jerry to rule on that too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you, Mike. Okay, new business. Celebrate Milford acceptance of gifts, Parks, uh, for the Parks Department. Uh, Celebrate Milford, uh, sent us a note, I'm sorry, Mike Fraschani sent us a note. Celebrate Milford Board of Directors happy to announce is donating seven thousand dollars to Milford Park Commissioners to be used under their jurisdiction for improvements to the Milford Town Park. I'm not sure they can earmark it. I think it could be used under the jurisdiction, but I don't think they can specify a specific earmark.
I can, I can check on that.
Can you check on that? Um, and, and we should give board, I don't want to take away or negate the positive effect. Celebrate Milford was a fantastic event. I took my grandkids and my family and, uh, we just had a ball. Not only that, dunking will, uh, concave. The chairman was, uh, another side benefit.
I know in years, years past, only because last year they gave a donation to the youth center.
They, they can, 'cause it's not earmarked, right? So, so if you're giving it to the youth center, they couldn't say, "To the youth center to fix that window."
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. I gotcha.
But they can give it to, under their jurisdiction.
Correct.
Uh, they give it to Parks under their jurisdiction.
Right.
Okay. You can check that. I'm, I'm not sure if they can.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But I'm not sure.
Yeah, uh, can you check on that?
Sure.
But in any event, um, I'd like to accept the gift, just provided that, uh, Rick looks at that. Because, uh, Celebrate Milford is something, if Milford, uh, people haven't had the opportunity to go out and see the great things that happen there, the vendors that participate, I only see that event getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And as a result of, uh, the donations that come in, uh, and the events, um, you know, they're able to uh, contribute to other events, uh, 'cause we have another one, um, or there was another one, wasn't there? Um, who else did Celebrate Milford give to? I, I know there's others.
They've given to a number. I think they.
A number of groups.
They've given some to the schools, uh, I think it's, it's.
So, it goes to a lot of people. It's not just this.
Oh, no, no, no.
Alright.
No.
Um, so, uh, I'll accept the motion to accept that gift.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second, and that's unanimous. Next, we have a historical gift account. Twenty dollars, uh, for the historical commission. The donor name is Josephine O'Keefe. I'll take a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll, I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Alright. Next, we have a letter from the police chief, uh, to the Board of Selectmen from Tom O'Loughlin, um, about a hidden driveway sign. Uh, where he writes, "It appears that the hi, that hidden driveway sign was removed from the S-curves on Central Street when the new sign warning about the curves and the roadway were installed. I would recommend that a hidden driveway sign be posted on the same post that presently holds the, uh, twenty mile per hour advisory warning sign, um, southerly on Central Street prior to number three seventy-five." Any questions or concerns as it relates to that?
No, none at all.
Uh, it's a brutal corner and there are some hidden driveways. And there's an advisory warning sign. Okay. Uh, one of the things we ought to check on, Rick, and I want to make it separate from this. Where we have advisory warning signs, and now the state just, uh, allowed us to put up what we think is, uh, responsible and reasonable, uh, for issues of safety. Um, where we should go from advisory sign to, to speed, to posted speed limit.
Okay.
Um, I want to look at that S-corner and the S-Corner up on Highland.
Another one.
And it, it's easy to navigate on dry roads when it's snowy and icy. Uh, maybe we could help those people whose living rooms, um, cars may come and visit if, uh, they're not going the appropriate speed for the weather. So, um, a motion to, um, add this hidden driveway sign?
I'd make a motion to accept.
Okay, I'd also vote to, uh, based on the recommendations of the police chief to provide that, uh, hidden driveway sign. You know, sometimes we drift, but it takes us, these, these memos and different topics take us into discussions of things that we would uh, might not otherwise put on an agenda, but, uh, it's something we haven't leveraged, and that's the state's, uh, uh, new, uh, laws that allow us to allow local control over, uh, some of the speeds. And those two would seem to be both safety concerns.
Pretty sure the chief's looking at other areas too, where he would be looking to post.
Yeah, and you know, we, uh, as it relates to safety, Mike kicked off the safety discussion tonight. I want to further it. Um, one other thing, it's, while it's not new business, it's old business. I don't think we've, uh, finalized on the recommendation for crosswalks on Main Street.
We have not.
Can we get that at the next meeting?
Sure.
So, I, I want to put a stake in the ground that says, you know, it's been under review for nearly a year. So, it's time we close on that.
Follow-up, it's Scotty, yeah.
Alright. Um, we've touched on some of the correspondence. Um, we got a great piece of, uh, information, a great deal of detail from the Office of Information Technology. And this is from the IT director, uh, or IT manager, and it's to Zachary Taylor. It sees Rick Vilani. And Rick has, uh, provided this, uh, us with this update. This has been a topic for a long time, and we're due for a quarterly review. Um, why don't we look to see if September meeting?
Yeah, it's, he's ready when the board wants him.
Yeah, let's look at September.
This was hopefully to get your, to maybe consider doing that, but so when the board is ready.
Well, what's the second week of August meeting?
Be the seventh and then the twenty-first.
Yeah, why don't we look to see if we can get it on the twenty-first? I want to give them reasonable notice. And this is the basis for the discussion, right?
He could do the seventh, so whatever the board's pleasure is, yeah.
Alright, so I don't want to be talking in code for those that are watching at home, uh, or those that are in this audience, or even the members of the press. Um, this board received an update, uh, from the IT manager, talking about the various security uh, suites for our IT to, to maintain our infrastructure and firewalls and whatnot. So, uh, our systems can't be sacrificed or, uh, maliciously attacked, I should say. Um, then there's fuel management system on the highway department. I want, I want everybody to know that this isn't just an effort to improve IT within Town Hall, but, uh, they're also working closely with the library in Town Hall. Um, there's a new pension technology web portal. There's a new hel- help desk for the employees. One of the things I want to see is to what extent, um, folks have received that training, what's its rollout, how's it going, that type of thing. 'Cause that help desk is a key ticketing system to let, uh, the IT resources know that a critical system down, is down. And that we sometimes are unable to provide the services to the residents that we need to if the computers go down. Uh, new password policy is now required to change every hundred and twenty days, and that's forced. It's a forced password. It locks them out if they don't.
It is.
Um, first step in security is passwords, so. And then there's a host of other things that, uh, projecting going forward. I don't want to steal Andy's thunder from that, so I'll let him present what he's gonna roll out in the coming quarter. Okay, so that was on the correspondence. Next, we have OUI information, uh, that came from the Attorney General's Office. This is voluntary information for anybody who's charged with OUI, uh, where they're stating their last drink came from. There are a number of Milford businesses that are on this. Um, three instances for Turtle Tavern, one instance of Pin's Bowling Alley, and one from Cafe Sorrento. And, uh, consistent with past discussions, uh, well, there's not an actionable item here um, because, uh, frankly, we don't know the accuracy of the information that people provide when they get an OUI. But I do want to, uh, let the license holders know, uh, than we normally notify license holders with this information. So, that they're made aware, in case it ever comes up in any, uh, future action. Okay. With that, that concludes the, uh, items on, uh, the regular agenda. Uh, we'll be going into executive session. I'd like to get a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to adjourn the regular selectmen's meeting.
Alright, I'll second that. That's unanimous. Next, I'll ask that we go into executive session uh, for purposes of meeting with town council and consultants related to the water company. And second, to, uh, meet with town council, uh, regarding potential land acquisition. Um, I need to inform the public that we'll not be returning to open session after executive session. And with that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session for the purposes I've stated.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to go into executive session.
I'll also vote in, uh, affirmative, so that's unanimous. Next, I'll go roll call.
Yes.
Yes, I also vote affirmative. Uh, thank you and good evening.